All right, 118. Looks like we have one recusal.
Through the mayor, I reside in the subject area and I will be recusing myself.
All right, thank you very much. Same principle, levying assessments for Yuba City Landscape Maintenance District Number One, which is the Stabler Lane slash Garden Highway area.
Yes, so before I get started with this presentation, we have received quite a few comments from the public. And so, once we open the public hearing, I will read all of these comments, but I'll get into the presentation. So, again, the, this is a landscape maintenance district, so it includes landscaping only, does not include streetlights. And the District 1A is north end of Stabler Lane. So, for reference purposes, here's Stabler Lane, here's Queens Avenue, here's Pease Road, and so you have Jamie Drive that goes through here, Portofino that goes through here. And then District 1B is in the Garden Highway area. And again, here's Garden Highway. You have Lincoln Road right there, Boge Road, Shanghai Bend Road. So, again, the assessments were approved by the property owners of record at the time the districts were formed. Zones of Benefit A and B were not formed with provisions for a cost of living adjustment. So, when these districts were formed in the early 90s, the assessments were set and have not increased since then. There's also a District B1, which was recently formed. And, you know, why do we create a B1? Because there was a small annexation in that Garden Highway area. But because of, it was recently formed, we had the ability to add a COLA provision to that assessment. Again, the engineer's report was prepared and provided to the city clerk's office. In previous years, expenditures have exceeded revenues for Zones of Benefit A and B due to lack of COLA provisions. In the past, the city has addressed the negative fund balances by supplementing the the zones with additional funding sources, whether it's from General Fund or Streets and Road Fund. But as we get into more difficult budget times, the proposal this year would actually be to reduce the services for 1B rather than request additional supplemental funds from either the General Fund or Streets and Road Fund for the upkeep. However, that is an option for council to consider. So, the reductions in services are going to be extremely noticeable. And what you're going to hear from the comments tonight is that, you know, the public's not happy with how it looks right now. But, you know, with this reduction in terms of not supplementing the district, it's going to incur further degradation in terms of we'll be cutting off the water for several months during the winter. We'll just be addressing high-hazard trees. You'll see a reduction in terms of leaf pickup and trimming of shrubs. So, it will be noticeable. And this doesn't even address replacing, you know, plants or trees that die. So, you know, going forward, the city does not have the resources based upon the current assessment in 1B to maintain it at the level, number one, that the residents would like to see, but even to maintain it at the level that we currently are. So, one thing that, at the last council meeting, council requested that staff send a letter to the property owners within 1B. And so, those letters were sent out last Monday to not only the property owners, but residents that are actually living at the property in case it's different from the owner. And the letters gave background on the formation of the Zone of Benefit, the fact that a Proposition 218 process took place in 2008. It was unsuccessful. The property owners did not want to add COLA provisions to their assessment. And so, currently, each resident in 1B pays $29.50. If we were to cover the cost that it is to maintain, it would be $50 per year initially, plus applicable COLA increases as necessary. So, you would see a $20.50 increase initially. So, Zone of Benefit A, again, the revenue slightly exceeds the expenditures with the, with, you know, basically no fund balance. District B, the revenue is $65,937 with the expenditures of $62,676. This expenditure amount is based upon greatly reduced services. If you were to historically go back and look at how much we've paid outside landscape contractors to perform these services, it would be almost double that amount. But basically, we're going to be able to pay for about seven months of service with this amount. There is a fund balance in the district of $31,000, but staff recommends trying to maintain that to the extent possible because of unforeseen issues that might come up that need to be addressed. So, staff recommends maintaining Zone of Benefit B reserve balance is noted. So, moving forward, the city may be required to reduce maintenance levels in District 1. You could transfer additional funds to the district to supplement the maintenance along that corridor. And then, alternatives are to direct the modification of the assessment amounts, or cancel the district, which we wouldn't recommend, direct staff to follow Prop 218 procedure. And so, Prop 218 procedure, for those that haven't gone through it, is pretty intensive in that there's specific notifications you need to make. You need to have, basically, an engineer's report that explains why you are proposing the assessments that you are. And then, the property owners have the ability to vote on whether or not to move forward with a rate increase and then also adding COLA provisions. So, if council were to go that direction, there would be a cost involved in hiring the appropriate folks to assist not only with the, you know, meeting the Prop 218 requirements. A third option would be to direct other funding sources to supplement the district. So, the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and then adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 2020-21 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972. And with that, we'd recommend to open the public hearing.
Question real quick. The ordering the annual levy, that's just to maintain that $61,000, which is the reduction in services?
Yeah. So, when you're ordering the annual levy, we're levying them at the maximum amount as we have for years. And so, that would go to the assessor and they would place it on the tax rolls. And then, the property owners, as they're paying their taxes, would pay that assessment.
That's what they're currently paying now. And that's what, and they're getting what they're paying for now, which they're-
Well, actually, right now, they're getting, you know, the city has supplemented the district. This would be the first year that I'm aware of where we would actually provide, be providing the service, I should say, the first year in a while, that we'd be providing the service at the level that it's currently being funded by the property owners.
Okay. And then, how much, I'm sure you said it in the slide, how much more do you need to get it to where we would like, we would all like to have it?
It's estimated $50. And so, it's about a $20.50 increase from where it is today.
What's the bottom line amount?
Oh, you know, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay.
It would be, I think, in the range of about $110,000, $120,000.
Okay. So, significantly more than the reserve balance. Okay.
Yes, significantly more than the reserve balance.
All right, thank you.
And that wouldn't even address building up a reserve.
Right.
You know, that area also includes fencing, block walls, you know, over time, as those degrade, or you have people running into block walls that don't have insurance, you know, that also impacts the, there's not a capital reserve as well.
Removing hazard trees and the list goes on.
Right.
All right. Do you happen to remember or know, was there a reason behind not initially baking a COLA into this?
I don't. I know it goes back to the early 90s.
Long time ago.
And so, you know, I don't know if it was just the thought was that it would never, there probably wasn't a lot of forethought into the long term.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Get that water going.
Yeah. Okay. Starting the time. Okay. So, we've received a series of emails. My name is Shannon Culbertson, and I am the property owner at 573 Shanghai Bend Road. I am writing to express my opposition to the proposed 70% increase of $20.50 in the annual cost per residence for lighting and landscape maintenance District 1, Zone B. I have lived in and around this neighborhood since 1993 and have witnessed a steady decline in the condition of the landscaping, masonry walls, lighting, sidewalks, et cetera, during my time here. In fact, many of the trees along Garden Highway between Boge Road and Shanghai Bend Road have been removed just this year. The median landscape strip along the same segment is buckled in multiple places and has been for many years. The fountain at the entrance to my subdivision has been non-functioning for as long as I can recall and is pretty unsightly in its decayed state. I would like to know how much of the funds collected annually for Zone B have been spent maintaining physical infrastructure versus what was spent performing landscape maintenance. Is the proposed cost increase a one-time increase, or will the annual cost be reassessed on a regular schedule? It appears the city is using a contracted landscape company for routine landscape maintenance. The council should require public work assess the cost of these services and look for cost savings. Has the city analyzed the cost of using city employees versus contracted services? Can the contracted services be renegotiated? Has the city considered removing the existing landscaping, which requires frequent maintenance, and replacing it with low-maintenance water-wise plants? This would reduce the long-term maintenance costs long and would help meet state goals to use less water. Also, what are the city's plans to address the infrastructure, which is damaged and no longer functioning? I don't feel the funds I contribute have been used wisely, and I don't feel confident throwing more money at the problem would be beneficial for anyone. If you have any question, if you have questions or need additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me.
I have a question. You have several letters, and I'm probably going to forget by the time we get to the end of all of them. With the, the proposal of increase of $20.50, would that essentially address things like the fountain and whatnot that are brought up, or we just kind of-
No, that's-
-trim the bushes and mow the lawn?
That's truly to basically maintain the landscaping the way we are. That does not get that fountain functioning again. It doesn't address the raised sidewalk issues. And, you know, I just want to note that the city goes through a request for proposal process to hire the landscape contractor that contracts those services. And so, the contractor that's out there has been the, basically, the low bidder through that process. Community services staff did evaluate what it would cost for the city to provide the landscape maintenance, and it's significantly higher than what we pay the landscape contractor to do.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, next, next comment. This is from Gus Becerra. As a property owner in the reference district, we support the increase of the annual assessment from $29.50 to $50 in order to maintain the necessary landscaping, irrigation, masonry walls, ornamental lighting, and lighting and landscape District Number 1, Zone of Benefit B. The current annual assessment of $29.50 was set in 1990, and we understand costs have increased significantly since then. We don't believe the general fund should have to supplement the financial gap, and therefore, RHA supports the proposed increase. So, that's on behalf of the Regional Housing Authority. The next comment is from Lane Anderson. Hello. I would like to submit comments in regards to the additional funding needed for lighting and landscape District 1, Zone B, which will be an agenda item in this evening's public hearing. I am a homeowner living in Zone B, and I am in favor of raising the tax rate in order to keep Zone B maintained. Letting the maintenance lapse due to insufficient funds is not acceptable to me because it would reflect poorly on our city and also likely decrease our property values. Furthermore, I feel the rate increase being proposed by the Public Works Department is reasonable, considering it has not been adjusted in 30 years. The increase will be a minimal expense for property owners, just $1.70 per month. And for that small cost, our neighborhoods and properties will all benefit. Thank you for your time. The next item is going to be an email exchange between this person and then Kevin Bradford, and then a response from this person. This is from Mary Ann Lewis. I am a homeowner at 2252 Stony Brick Drive. We have lived in our home for 24 years. This is the first I have heard of a problem with the lack of funds to maintain the Garden Highway. I am not sure if a vote is being taken by the landowners or the city council. It was not clear in the letter we just received Monday, August 17, 2020. If the vote is taken tonight and it is landowners in that area, how do we cast our vote? And is it one vote per residence, or is it based off of how many people are on the title? Our household consisting of three adults is in favor of a tax increase of $20.50 to provide services to this landscape. Any information would be helpful. And then, Mr. Bradford responded. Thank you for your inquiry, and I apologize for any confusion in the letter you received. The vote being taken tonight is solely by the city council and is regarding solely whether or not to continue to assess the maximum possible levy of $29.50 on each residence. Prior to tonight's vote by city council, a public hearing will be held to give members of the public an opportunity to convey their input on the matter if desired. The only way your tax will ever increase in this landscape district is if, at some point in the future, our city council decides to move forward with a Proposition 218 vote. In this case, you would receive separate and more specific information regarding the Proposition 218 voting process, with ample time to review the process and cast your vote. Ms. Lewis responded. I would certainly like to see the Garden Highway landscaping to continue to be taken care of and would like to see a Proposition 218 vote so the homeowners can vote. The condition of landscaping affects our home values and makes the area more appealing for walking and just being outside. Okay. The next one is from Baldev Chima. My name is Baldev Chima. I own property in your District 1, Zone B. I received your letter in the mail yesterday, August 17, 2020. Your meeting is today. This is a less than one full day notice. This is in violation of the proper noticing provisions. I think you are well aware of this, and so are the residents of Yuba City. I will be joined in your online meeting. As this is improper notice, any action you may take on the rate increase will be null and void. Your lack of insight for the COLA provisions is a clear indication of how your city manager and council members have no brains to manage Yuba City. Your council members have only one goal, and that is to fill their own pockets and get their property zoned into the city limits to increase its value. Those members who own a business in the city want to increase their influence by getting elected to the council so that that can increase their customer base. They do not care about improving Yuba City or the well-being of its residents. I am not in favor of any increase for this benefit district. During these COVID times, people are having a tough time just putting food on the table, and you want them to give you more money for lighting and landscaping. Which planet did you all come from? I enter the above comments as part of your meeting records for tonight's meeting. May God give your management more sense. This next one is from Trip Leest, and I apologize if I'm saying the last name incorrectly. Please, we have been paying taxes for lighting and landscaping for years. All of a sudden, in the height of the summer, suddenly, there is no funding for these vital services. Lighting is a basic safety issue. The landscaping maintenance, parentheses, water, ensures the appeal of the roadways in our city. In addition, it adds to the value of our property. A little over a month ago, the city paid to have the plants trimmed, only to immediately turn off the water and let the plants die. If the budget is tight, water is the primary expenditure. Without it, the plants die. Providing water to plants is vastly less expensive than replacing the plants at a later date. All you have to do is turn on the water and raise the rate if you need to. It's only an extra $20 a year. One single tree is twice that. Thank you. The next one is from Mr. and Mrs. Ronald Mann. We would like to express the comment at tonight's, August 18, 2020, city council meeting regarding the annual levy of District 1, Zone B, for landscaping maintenance. We concur that the annual fee needs to be raised from $29.50 to $50 per residence per year. As a homeowner at 2320 Stephen Way, I consider this a nominal yearly fee and a very good way to spend the money. It is important to the community to have nice landscaping along our roadways, in this case, the Garden Highway between Lincoln Road and Diamond Point Way. We hope you approve the city public works department's request for this fee increase. This is from James Victor. And it says, a resident's comments and her questions. Ladies and gentlemen of Yuba City, cost of living adjustments was mentioned in the main body of your letter and a reason you want money. My question is, whose cost of living allowance are the city's officials referencing? And also, what is your definition of cost of living adjustment, as we may have different definitions respectfully? Please be specific. The mistake referenced in your letter, the city did not, parentheses, failed to include provisions, is exactly that, a failure and/or mistake maybe. Regardless, we are discussing the residents who reside in the area and their money, residents who reside in the mapped area respectfully. Sometimes mistakes are made, even by city officials, parentheses, mismanagement, take your pick. Respectfully, I believe mismanagement by professionals should not be put on the backs of citizens residing in the area District Number 1. What did the city do in other areas where new housing was being established? Did city officials make similar errors? I am confident our city has many other sources of revenue, and that maintenance costs in this district can and should be readily absorbed into the city's budget respectfully. Again, leave the citizens residing in this area alone in relation to city mismanagement problems. To be blunt, it is unfair tactics being used on our own, period. In addition, city water costs are already out of control and continue to be used on the citizen for additional city revenue. But then, that is another subject on another day, I guess. In closing, city officials are incorrect at requesting any additional monies for subject maintenance referenced in your letter. I vote no. And then, we have from Julie Wilson. I have lived in Feather River State since 1993. For the first five years or so, friends and relatives who came to visit from out of town would drive up Garden Highway from the south and marvel at how pretty Garden Highway was. Sadly, their enthusiasm for the area was short-lived. After about five years, I started to notice a decline in maintenance. Drip lines would go unrepaired, and plants would die. Dead plants would be removed but never replaced, and the drip line would go unrepaired. There are now large swaths in District B with 50% or less of the original vegetation. For at least 15 years, my husband has been keeping the plants at the entrance of our subdivision alive by carrying two 5-gallon buckets of water out there from our home every few days. He should not have to do that, but he does because he understands the impact dead landscaping has on property values. I would have most certainly requested COLA adjustment in 2008 if I had been aware of public hearings to do so. I would have this, this not only to preserve our property values, but also to save costs of 30 to 50 gallons of water a week on our ever-increasing water bill. As a homeowner, I am more than happy to pay the additional $20.50 to properly maintain the landscaping. I am asking the city councils please vote in favor of modifying the rates in District B, including COLA provision. Anything less is a vote to lower our property values. In addition, I would like the city council to discuss how the city plans to correct years of neglect in Zone B. When will the plants that have been removed or be replaced, and when will the drip lines be systematically tested, repaired, or replaced? At this time, I would like to take a moment to also address the public works method of communication. Despite being dated August 7, 2020, I only received the letter August 14, and my neighbors received theirs just yesterday. This makes me wonder how many residents have not yet received their letter. In addition, a letter sent to current resident is likely going to be assessed as junk and never opened. It's also not going to land in the hands of property owners of rentals who live out of town. These people are not being given a voice. Thank you for your time tonight. I hope you vote to save our property values. And then, I believe we have another one that came in that I'm going to read from email. Hello. My name is Lizeth Ramirez, and I have the following questions and concerns. The letter I received states, moving forward, if the city is unable to raise rates in Zone B, it will no longer be able to maintain Zone B to an acceptable level due to insufficient funding. This may result in plants dying due to the lack of irrigation and other overgrowth of shrubs and trees in these areas, and weeds becoming more prevalent in these areas. Today, I took a drive down this corridor just to take pictures of this area. The pictures demonstrate the above statement made by you, City of Yuba City officials. Although there are areas in this corridor that look well-manicured, the majority of the corridor looks atrocious and, from my point of view, extremely unacceptable. There are overgrown shrubs, dried shrubs, weeds, garbage, graffiti on concrete wall, concrete raised to the degree of pedestrianism I'm able to walk on. My question is, if this is already happening, what or who is going to guarantee us, the residents in Zone B, that with the fee increase, this entire corridor will look extremely well-manicured with absolutely no weeds, no garbage, no graffiti, et cetera? I have no problem paying $50 a year to keep the entire corridor looking great. Let me emphasize that with the fee increase, my personal expectation skyrockets to see this area clean enough to par. No more mediocrity in the maintenance of the entire area, not just select areas which meet certain criteria. And she attached pictures, so we will provide those pictures to council as a follow-up email. And with that, I'm not sure if we have any additional comments.
We have one more that's come on, on the line. Okay, this is from Heather Eschman. As a resident of Yuba City that has often driven to work in this area in the past, it's clear that many residents are unhappy with the current status. I hope the council will think outside the box and, if necessary, conduct the 218 to get the true opinion of the area.
All right. And just confirming that was the only thing we have pending? No more?
No more.
All right. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And I have one question done. I'm sure there's a lot of people watching tonight. We're raising, or a proposal to raise the rates by $20.50 a year?
No, we're not. So, the action before you tonight is just to, to basically confirm the current assessment amount of, for Districts 1A, 1B, and then 1B1, and then order the annual levy of assessments? So, it's going to remain the same assessment that they've been paying for years?
Okay.
As an alternative, or as an additional option, what council could do, if they so choose, is to direct staff to explore the process of going through a Proposition 218 process?
That was going to be my question.
Yeah. And so, there was confusion. You can tell from the correspondence in terms of that tonight, council is going to be making decision related to increasing the rates, and that's absolutely not true. And we apologize if the letter created confusion. But the action tonight is just to continue with the current rates as they are, recognizing that in so doing, and not supplementing the district with additional revenues, that the level of maintenance is going to decline significantly further than what it is today.
All right. So, that was going to be my question to help clarify. We're not raising rates. In order to do that, we have to do 218?
Yes.
And do you have any guesstimation what that would cost city to put that forward?
I would guess in the tens of thousands of dollars, just from the standpoint that you need to have an engineer's report. And so, we would, you know, one option would be to reach out to our current consultant that prepares that. There's also a lot of attorney, attorney time involved in terms of preparing the notices for the, because there's, there's a couple of different notices that have to go out to the residents, and then staff time associated with it. And so, you know, I can't say in terms of what it would be, but my guess would be in the, you know, it would be, if I were to have to guess, I would say it'd be less than $50,000, but there would be a significant cost associated with it.
Okay. It's important for whoever's watching to understand that we're gonna, you're gonna, we have, in order to get more, to get better maintenance, we're gonna have to do the 218 process, which is about 50-ish thousand dollars to get there. And that's if it's approved.
Right. And I just want to note, in 2008, when we went through that process, it was not approved by the residents.
Okay. Any other further, sir?
Through the mayor. Thank you for bringing, Mr. Mayor, the clarification, because you could tell that there was a lot of confusion on that. And we're not making, you know, a doubling of the rate decision tonight, as some people were alluding to. But I think the first thing, and I got a text earlier with a picture of the, the letter, picture of the envelope, we owe the people down there in District 1 an apology. Because while the letter was dated August 7, the postmark that was sent to me earlier was Friday, the 14. And many people just got it yesterday. And while this isn't fixing the big picture, I would hope that we could get things out more timely in the future, because it, it bodes not well for us when they get it the day before a council meeting.
I'd like to note that it was mailed from our office on last Monday.
Okay. I can share this, I can share that with you later. It was, the one I got today was August 14, was the metered that went through.
The staff, actually, I'm going to go into detail here, because staff worked the previous Friday to get all of the envelope stuff so that we could have it out at least a week in advance in terms of mailing it out. So, it is disappointing that it's postmarked on Friday and that they received it Monday, because we did mail it, you know, a little over a week in advance.
Okay. But with that being said, because I know people were alluding to the whole fact of it the 17th and the 14th, first of all, we apologize. But we're not here tonight to decide if the rate goes from $29.50 to $50. It's whether or not we're going to leave it to $29.50. But it leads into a much bigger discussion, and you alluded to it, Ms. Langley, and that was, in '08, we tried this. You know, it's not that there are inept leaders here today. This goes back 30 years that this problem started. There wasn't a one of us in this room that was here making those decisions 30 years ago, that did not have the adjustments there, that did not let it increase. And so, over 30 years, everything has gone up. Gas, insurance, everything. So, to think that we can continue with the same level of service that we've had over the years, with still paying the 1990 fee is a, it's inconceivable. Because all over the city, each district takes care of their own maintenance, as you've been showing going through this, but their levy, or their maintenance assessments and lighting assessments. The bigger picture is, I agree with the mayor, we have to look at the 218. We have to conduct, once we're through the, the COVID situation, we need to have public hearings, not just hearing the chambers, but go down to District 1, go down to where the residents are, because we've been actually hearing from different residents down there about how atrocious the landscape- how atrocious the landscaping is. And so, we need to go to them, and at our first opportunity to where we can have a large gathering. Not to sit around and complain for an hour, but let's talk about what the real solution is going to be. Are we going to go to more low-maintenance type of landscaping to where it will, long-term cost us less? See if we can get the residents as a whole, if their sentiment is, you know, if they want to have the beautification, then they need to clearly understand that we're not trying to make any money off this. We're trying to keep that section of town beautiful. And it's not what it once was. But it's because we're paying 30-year-old rates. So we need to work together with them so they understand that and come up with a solution. If I can go even further, as the vice mayor myself has been going through the budget ad hoc, and we know how tight our budget is, this wasn't suddenly in 2020 in the summer in a heat wave that, oh, we're suddenly out of money. This has been a problem brewing for 30 years, and COVID has done to us what it's done to everyone else around. Finances get tight. So we're having to look at this squarely and go, this is the issue that we have. But as we get clearer numbers, I think the council could take it upon us to look, to see if we could continue to subsidize it to a certain level until we can go through the 218 process. And then, once we go through that, it's really up to the people of that district. If they want the improvements and they want the nicer landscaping, then they'll have to go through that process so that we can pay realistic fees for this day and age. If it doesn't, then that's what that area of town will, they can only afford what they are raising the revenues for. But this is one that we have to include the residents of District 1, because ultimately, we need to go to 218, they need to make the decision, and then we need to execute what they say. But I think we need to try to find it somewhere as we move forward to just try to get us through this bridge time, so.
Through the mayor, thank you. I just have a real basic, a couple of basic questions. In reading the letter, as I'm listening, and I read it before and talked, I'm, the presentation and the letter are just not matching in my understanding of it. If I'm a community member, like many I am, no wonder there's a sense of confusion that there is an increase occurring, but it really, what we're asking is the diagram and a resolution. Am I simplifying it?
The item before you tonight is to confirm and order the annual levy.
Right, just the diagram area and the...
The levy amount.
And the levy amount, that's it. I, and I'm, I'm reading the letter, and I would say to all the individuals that wrote to us and bringing this to us, I thank you for the time and energy in doing that. And I do recognize that the letter, the letter that was sent out to the residents, and I'm not just speaking of district when I'm talking about all the multiple districts, because every district has a different need and, excuse me, and challenge that we're reviewing. But in this particular district, it's confusing to me to read this letter and then why our constituents were questioning the potential raise. 218 is the direction that if the raise was to occur, and at this moment, I support just the boundary and the resolution, but there's no raise to it, according to the way I'm reading this.
If we decide to go 218 processes, does that decision have to be made right now for staff direction, or can we?
No.
Okay. I definitely echo what Councilmember Shaw says. I think it's been 12 years, it looks bad, that's kind of a gateway to the city if you come in via Garden Highway. If I live there, I definitely want everything, including the sidewalk and the aforementioned fountain, to be working as intended. And I think it's important that we give them an opportunity to decide if they would like that. And also gives us an opportunity to, excuse me, to communicate that to them. You have something?
Right, so the $50 is based upon basically maintaining what's there. If council's wanting to also evaluate what it would take to get the fountain running, to either modify the landscaping or increase the landscaping, that's different, and that would likely be a higher assessment. And so, if that's the direction that council would want to go, then, you know, it would still be the same process, but it would, I just want to be very clear, that $50 would not support that.
Right, and I guess we can have the conversation later, but I'd like to give maybe a list of options, if we're able to do that. One is the Full Monte, you know, looking really pristine, and then something a little bit above what we're going to be able to provide, or actually, a lot above what we're going to be able to provide, even if we keep things the same.
So we did, this is, so down on Bog Road, southwest portion of town, the residents, the landscaping along Bog Road was an issue. We went forward, gave the residents, and just to vary, there aren't a lot of people that live on the street adjacent to, gave them some different options. We could not get clear consensus whatsoever in terms of they wanted, the direction they wanted to go. So we can definitely put different options out there, just expect that you're going to have a multitude of responses, which makes it difficult in terms of making a decision in terms of the direction we're going to go.
Yeah. Because you can't really, you have to vote yes or no. You can't say, I vote for option A. That's the tough part.
You can do an informal to try to gauge...
And that's where you get the chaos.
And that's where you get the chaos.
Man, all right. But we hear them, you know, when, you know, it was brand new back there, it seems like yesterday, apparently it was a couple decades when that was all brand new. I mean, it looked nice, and when you move in, you assume it's going to stay that way. And it just, it just takes money. All right. With that being said, any other comment?
I'm just going to let council know, the fountain down there at Shanghai Bin and Garden Highway, the reason why it's not running is because it was vandalized so many times, we couldn't keep up with it.
All right, that's good to know. That could potentially be part of the modification process. I know low-water planning is very popular nowadays. So, all right.
Through the mayor?
Yep.
If you're ready for a motion, sir?
Yep, ready.
All right, and to be clear, the adoption is to just keep the rates the exact same amount they've been for 30 years. But with that, I move to adopt a resolution confirming and ordering the annual levy of assessments for fiscal year 2020, 21 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
Second.
First and second, to all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None, all right. I'm sure we'll be hearing about this again. Completely understand that.